Good afternoon and welcome to your August Johnston County Board of Education meeting. At this time, Ms. Dance, we do have a quorum. We have four, excuse me, five board members in the boardroom and Mr. K. Carroll virtual today. So at this time, I'll call on Mr. Wooton for the invocation, followed by Ms. Andrews for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, would you just come before you, dear God, and just give you thanks for letting us enjoy this day with you, dear Lord. And I appreciate the service to this county through the Board of Education, to our students, teachers, and citizens of Johnston County. I pray that all decisions we make today are pleasing in your eyes, dear Lord. And I just ask you a hedge of protection for our students that are finishing up a wonderful summer, that they're refreshed and ready to go back to school, as well as our teachers and administrators. We're so excited about the year to come and just bless this day in Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose stated on our agenda. Motion by Mr. Bird, second by Mr. Carroll. We'll go to a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Carroll. Mr. Wooton?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Sessoms?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries six zero. We'll now go into closed session.
We have already determined a quorum, as well as our invocation and our pledge of allegiance, as well as going into closed session. So now we're in our open session. At this time, I will ask for approval of the minutes for our June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, June ninth, uh, June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, as well as June, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two special session minutes.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Wooten.
Second.
Second by Ms. Andrews. We'll go to a roll call due to having Mr. Carroll virtual today. Starting with Mr. Carroll.
You.
Mr. Wooten.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Ms. Sessoms.
Yes.
Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries six zero. At this time, we'll go into a discussion and adjustment to our agenda, starting with Mr. Byrd. No adjustments. Ms. Sessoms.
Yes, sir. Um, I request that we take the items from the chief of facilities, that's ten C, chief of facilities and construction, the final twenty, twenty-two bond referendum, and move from C, ten C up to four D.
Thank you, Ms. Sessoms. Ms. Andrews.
Yes, sir. Um, would like to move, um, Roman numeral seven, special recognitions for our athletes. I would like to move it up and make it five A.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Mr. Wooten.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to move items, items for chief of finance, ten E, one and two, and move that to seven E, one and two.
Thank you, Mr..
Excuse me, six E, one and two.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wooten. Uh, I entertain a motion to, for the adjustments to our agenda.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Andrews, second by Mr. Wooten. Roll call, starting with Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
Ms. Sessoms.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Wooten.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll. I vote yes. Motion carries six zero. So at this time, we'll call up Mr. Brooks Moore.
All right. Good af- afternoon, everyone. Uh, go ahead and get, get going. So, uh, tonight is, is our final up, update for the twenty-twenty-two bond referendum plans. This is our fi- final plan for approval. Um, and I've, I've told this story a few, few, few times, March, April, board, board meetings, but we, we cannot tell our story enough. And this is our story. And this is, is the facts. We are the fastest growing county in the state, the not fastest in, in the nation. Um, there are two hundred and twenty-four approved, not waiting to be approved, but approved developments across our county comprising nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven lots that could be started and built right now. Um, existing school inf- infrastructure, cannot forget that, that the average age of our existing schools are thirty-two years, years, years old. We, we were blessed to build, build a lot from about ni- ninety-seven to two thousand eightish, but they are, um, appro- approach, approaching the age of chillers, mechanical parts, parts and stuff going, going, going out. So all, all of that comprises an, an additional two hundred and fifty-three million dollars of infrastructure needs. This, this is a map of all of those approved developments. As, as you can see, they're widespread. They're not in one, one, one area. That's, that's, that's like fifty miles of, um, um, the western half of our county. So those items there, for a person like me in this, this, this job, that, that keeps me up, up, up at night. They, they are very disturbing. Red, lots of red means the schools are over capacity, not near capacity, but over capacity. Here's our second chart with the mid, mid, middle schools and high, high schools. So here's a nice, nice graph that kind, kind of pools what, what our current capaci- capacity is, red line, to where our, uh, projected in, in realm is heading. So where is this taking us? This, if we don't do anything right now, by twenty-twenty-nine, these are, are the amount of mo- mobile units that we'll have to add at each school. A hundred and thir- thirty-nine more added to our existing a hundred and eighty-six mobiles. So, um, stu- students can tell you, especially teachers can, can tell, tell, tell you principals and stuff, many, many effects of overcrowded schools. Um, I mean, we lose teachers every day, um, the wear, wear and tear. Um, there's DTI class, class, class size for K, K three. So many, many reasons why, um, o- overcrow- crowded schools affect performance. So with, with that, this all pulls, pulls into our critical growth needs, five, five-year plan of, of growth needs. It's six new schools and sev- seven expansions. So we were, um, fortunate to have mul- multiple meetings with, with the county commissioners, um, and discuss our, our needs and, and they said, hey, bring us a plan that, what's your tier one? What's your tier two and tier, tier, tier threes? We obviously cannot do all of that in one bond, but we can break, break it into three, three bonds. So here is, is, is our prioritized, um, growth, growth needs, which is, is, is extremely diff- difficult to prioritize whenever there's so much growth. But did, did the best, best we could. And here's our tier one, tier two, and tier three for three consecutive bonds. So af- after that, um, we were told that, so our tier one was es- estimated to cost two, two hundred and fifty-three million. Um, the county settled on a hundred and se- seventy-seven million. So additional cuts had, had to be pushed, pushed back. So here is our recommended twenty-twenty-two final bond plan, a new high school. A new high school helps all high schools. We have eight hi- high schools and they're all nearing, nearing, nearing or considerably o- over capacity. Um, but we had to help all of these, these schools. We couldn't just help one. We had to, 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 to help all. And building that school allows us to remove fifty-three mobile units. Um, second is, so in addition, addition to Cooper Academy, the biggest thing, thing here is location. Cooper Academy is, is located right in the heart of, uh, C- Colleton, and there is considerable growth right, right at its front, front door. So it's, it's hard to build an additional school in that area to help Cooper. So you, you build on Cooper. The back part, part there, the woods is, um, we, we own that. So there's, there's a con- concept plan to build, build a tw- twenty-three classroom ex- expansion back that way. Elementary school in the Swiff Creek area, again, many, many schools that need help. Um, and this allows us to remove forty-seven mobile classrooms at these schools. And, and last is, in addition to Benson, again, lo- location is so far toward, towards the southern bor- border that, um, i- i- building a high, building a school in that, that area would, would, would help, help it some. But it's so, it's, it's so land, landlocked against, yes, the county line, line that the districts and stuff, you have to, to build, build. And addition, addition is more e- economical. So there's, there's one of the schools, Palenta, that, that new school will help. Sev- sev- seventeen mobiles just at that school. Um, additional plans with, with the bond, safety, security at the forefront of ev- everyone's, one's mind, un- unfortunately, these, these days. But, um, up, upgrades and new features added at all, all campuses to improve the safe, safety of our students and staff. Assessment of our A, ADA access. There's, there's many camp- campuses that do, do not meet this. And this is not a, a grandfather law. This is the law. We have to meet, meet these. So this is critical. And numerous, numerous, numerous HVAC up- upgrades. That's one, one of the big, biggest issues across our, our district. Infrastructure is HVAC issues. So before I get too much in, into that, the, Dr. Bracy reminded mine to me that I'm an engineer and I can, I, I know what chillers and boilers and stuff, but he's like, man, we're edu- educators. Come on. So a quick little tutorial here. The blue circle is, is what we call the, uh, central plant, where, where the chiller boilers are. And the blue lines and the red lines is called a chilled and hot water system that circulates water through, through the school. The y- y- yellow squares are what's called air han- handler. So the, if it's in cool, cool limo, the water that's circulating through the whole, whole campus from that chiller goes to the coal that's on the air ha- ha- handler and cools the coal as the air passes through it. Vice, vice versa for heating mode. So red, red with a boil, boil, boiler is heating mode, mode for heating, heating the coal, and then the air passes through, through it, is, is, and, and heated. So this, this is a chiller. Minus the weeds, but this is, this is a chiller. This is what we want. This, this is an air, air handler. You'll see the blue is, is the chilled, chilled water. The red is the hot water. It comes into that u- unit. The air passes through it. Um, this is our two thousand four control system that controls the air conditioning system at South Johnson High School. This is a twenty-three-year-old chiller. This is what you don't want, 'cause they are, are recommended to be replaced at fifteen years. This, this one is twenty-three years, years old. If you look on the bo- bo- bottom is the, um, compressors. One's, one's missing. Couple, I'm look, 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 okay. The one, one on the left has, has a busted seal. It's, it's leaking. So this is what, what you don't want. This is a thirty-two-year-old air ha- handler that's at Four Ugs Elementary School on the lef- left side. Thir- thirty-two years old. It should have been replaced twelve years, years ago. On the right is a, a fuel-old boiler at South, South Johnson High School. Fuel oil was replaced by propane, and then it was replaced by natural gas. We're still heating with fuel, fuel oil at South, South Johnson High School. This is what, what you want. On the right is, is a new natural gas condensing boiler, much, 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 much more efficient than a low sulfur diesel fuel oil boiler. Here's the best one. Anyone remember the old, um, Atari game that was on DOS?
MS-DOS.
MS-DOS. This is a twenty-eight-year-old control system that we, we still operate, and it's operating on a Microsoft XP. Anyone know when Microsoft XP was still used? Two thousand one. So, so, so we're still controlling six schools off of this operating system that's a MS-DOS. So you have to mash P to go to, to the school and mash E to look at the schedule and change the temperatures and all of that stuff. It's, um, so anyway, that's, that's some background to what we're working on with some of the ESSER dollars and HVAC infrastructure upgrades. Is not on, on, only as, as you saw first, that it's critical for our growth, but it's critical for our infrastructure, 'cause I'm, I'm sure there's teachers here that, that can tell you it's a everyday occurrence, a everyday distraction, HVAC. Um, so here's a, uh, continued list, uh, some parking lots, bus drives, window replacements, bathroom storage, building, a whole bunch of HVAC equipment, some tennis courts at Triple-S, playground equipment. So the track at Cleveland High, uh, the old gym roof at Clayton High School. Uh, here's those tennis courts at Triple-S High School. Playground at Selma. So, all right. In summary, hundred and sev- seventy-seven, seven, hundred and seventy-seven million is what, what we're work, working with from, from the county with a twenty-twenty-two bond. Um, so as you, you can see how much this is nee- needed to help our, our growth and if, and for struc- structure needs. We're also a- adding twenty-six point nine-five million from ESSER and capital funds to help with these additional in- infrastructure items. And many people question why a bond? Why a bond? Because if, if you go build, build a house, you're gonna get a construction loan. Most, most people are. Um, the county has, has, has to get a low-interest construction loan to accomplish this. This, this plan right, right here is going to add capacity for about a third of our, our needs, but most importantly, there's some stuff in this bond that we can't, that, that sets up the next two bonds. So if this bond doesn't pass, we can't just go into, uh, Clayton High and ren- renovate it or Triple-S or any of that, 'cause we have to build, build that high school first. So there's many items that's in the next two bonds that can only be achieved if this bond passes. Um, so we need you, not, not just you seven, but, but the, anyone watching, the uncar- tired, tired of the county, our, our needs are critical. And, um... Any questions? That is our tw- twenty-two bond plan presented for, uh, approval.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, this is an action item, so I would entertain a motion to approve our final bond referendum for twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. Wooten. Any questions or comments?
Ms. Chairman, I just have one for Mr. Moore. Great presentation, Mr. Moore. You and Ms. Fur can take this. Is there, has a website been created and dedicated to this bond yet?
It's com- coming. We're, we're buil- building it now, yes, sir. But we, we wanted to get the final plan and, and, and then go live.
It'd be great to get all these presentations and timelines in that central location.
Of course.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. No other questions or comments? We'll entertain our vote, starting with Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
Ms. Sessoms.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Wooten.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll. I vote yes. Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Mr. Moore. At this time, we'll call on Mr. Josh Plisco. At this time, we'll call on Mr. Josh Plisco.
At this time, if I could have the athletes stand up, we'll start with the baseball players over here and softball and Paul, if you can stay over there. There you go. Come here, young ladies from Clayton. Alright. As you can see, we've got four softball players up here tonight. Uh, softball's very strong in the county this spring and is gonna be next year as well. Um, good evening Chairman Sutton, Vice Chair Sesums, Dr. Bracy and members of the board. Uh, we're here to honor our athlete recognitions tonight, uh, parents in the crowd. Um, this is for you, so feel free to come behind here if you need to take any pictures or anything like that as we get started. Uh, we're gonna go through each of our athletes uh, for recognitions and then they'll, they'll go around and greet the board. Um, first of all, uh, we have a couple of All-Star situations here. We've talked about North Carolina State, um, the All-State Football um, competition that was held in Greensboro and Paul was a member of that. Um, and all the athletes up here were not nominated for just any old All-Star game. This was through the Coaches Association, both the Softball Coaches Association, the Baseball Coaches Association of North Carolina and the Football Coaches Association of North Carolina. So we thank our coaches for staying involved and invested those things to promote our kids as well. Um, getting started with baseball, uh, from Corinth holders High School, uh, Mr. Brian Johnson, principal of the school is here with us to celebrate tonight. And Mr. Adam Weaver, baseball coach and AD. Um, Alex Levake is our first um, baseball player to be recognized tonight. He was a senior during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. His offensive stats was a five-hundred batting average, six-ten on base, twenty-four RBIs, twelve doubles, two triples. Um, as a catcher, he only gave up four stolen bases all last season, uh, which is, is a great accomplishment for that position. He was, had MVP accolades and was a four-time academic all-conference recipient as well. Alex will continue playing baseball in college and we are excited to see him continue to grow, not only on the baseball field, but as a young man, Coach Weaver said. Our coaching staff is extremely proud of his selection to the twenty-two, four-eight All-State Baseball Team. Let's give a round of applause for Alex. And Jet, if you wanna slide over here. With a name like that, his fastball has to be good. Um, so um, Jet, three ninety-two batting average, four seventy-seven on-base percentage. Uh, he was, he was sophomore this year, right? So he'll be back for two springs with us. Um, twenty-nine runs scored, twenty-five stolen bases. His pitching stats, he was seven-two and seven-and-two with one save and under one for an ERA with a point-nine-two ERA and eighty-nine strikeouts. Uh, I joked with him in the hallway saying, um, you can walk a couple guys if you're gonna strike out eighty-nine in the year too, but don't tell that to Coach Weaver. Um, very excited for him and to continue following him for the, the next couple of years. Let's give a round of applause for Jet. Paul, if you wanna come over here. We have Paul from Princeton High School and uh, he was the first Bulldog to my knowledge to represent the team in, in forty years at the Coaches All-Star Game. So that, that was an honor there as well, so uh, excited for that. And uh, Paul um, really did a great job. It was fun watching him all fall and it was great to see him again in Greensboro. So um, without further ado, we're looking forward to seeing Paul and what he's gonna accomplish and everybody's very proud of him. So let's give a round of applause for Paul. And Princeton has quite a few here tonight and the two softball players, um, if you wanna come on over here. And also here tonight to help celebrate is Coach Charlie Cox and Coach Tori Hinton. They're here to celebrate their athletes as well. Um, Avery Dotree is a third baseman. She was awarded for her junior season and is currently a senior. Uh, she had a five-seventy-seven batting average, five-ninety-seven on base, forty-one hits, thirty-four RBIs. She had seventy-one at-bats with zero strikeouts, along with twenty-four assists offensively, so outstanding at the plate. Coach said Avery was a huge asset for us offensively while holding down a solid third base. She batted in the cleanup spot and came in clutch many times. Every time she was up to bat, I knew she would make something happen for us at the plate. We will continue to support her in every aspect of her career that we can at Princeton High School. Her future plans are to play at the collegiate level while pursuing a career interest. Let's give a round of applause for Avery. Katie Roberson, also All-State softball. Um, she had a four-seventy batting average, uh, five-eighty-three on-base percentage, nine stolen bases, forty-three runs and slug seven forty-two. Coach said this about Kayden, she's one of the best players that you could ask to play for you, she'll do anything. She responds with, yes ma'am, she's our lead off batter who would come through for us to get the inning started or to turn the lineup over. She played a phenomenal centerfield and then was moved to shortstop and was solid there as well. Kayden is leader on and off the field as well as in the classroom. She is one of those players and people that coaches dream of being able to coach. We are thankful we get two more years with her and can't wait to support her in every way possible. She also would like to play college softball and pursue a career in the medical field. Let's give a round of applause for Kayden. And now for the comments softballers that are All-State this, uh, this, from this past spring. Autumn Joyce was awarded for her freshman season as a current sophomore, so we're gonna be able to follow her for some years to come now. She has a five-thirty-three batting average and nine-seventeen slugging percentage. Coach Com- Coach Parrish is also here to uh, recognize his, his athletes today as well, head coach of the Clayton Comments. Um, Autumn was a great addition to our team this year. She quickly made her presence known, earning out our leadoff position at the plate and started in left field as a freshman. Autumn has unbelievable speed and power at the plate. She led a team in every offensive category and was a great outfielder as well. We're very proud of Autumn as we choose, she was selected as the offensive MVP, all-conference, all-district and now all-state as a freshman. And we are really looking forward to seeing what the next three years are for her as a comment. Let's give a round of applause. Kalen Kyle, All-State softball. Um, she also had a perfect game this year at Corinth holders High School that I happened to be at and I was a little bit frustrated that no one wanted to break the jinx, so they didn't tell me what it was and I was going back before the softball and baseball and found out about it when I was in the parking lot. But that was a, was a funny story. But anyway, uh, Kalen is a very special player. Since her freshman year, she has been a leader on and off the field. Kalen was a top four per- was a top four producer at the plate all four years with an overall three-forty-one batting average, six-oh-two slugging. Kalen was the starting pitcher for all four years with an overall one-point-zero-four ERA and over five-hundred strikeouts. With five-hundred-and-sixty-three strikeouts in her career, forty-two wins and four no-hitters. She is the kind of player that every coach dreams of having on their team and will go on to do bigger things in college. Kalen has been awarded a soft- softball scholarship to the University of Garner Webb and we're looking forward to following her and seeing her future accomplishments. Let's give a round of applause. Athletes may go around, start here. Thank you. Hey, good luck. Good luck, we'll see you next spring.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, good luck, Garner Webb, how Coach Parrish should be.
Okay, thanks so much.
At this time, I will call on Mr. Wooton and Ms. Andrews for the finance committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm excited for Mr. Britt to come up. I'm gonna give all, all my time to him. He's got the new salary schedules and we're gonna talk about the budget. And, but I, I felt like I need to say that, that Stephen Britt has done phenomenal things in our finance department with Johnston County Public Schools. And you know, I would think Chad McLan with the county would say the same thing, that the way he's presenting our budget. I think the county understands our numbers be- better than any time ever before. Um, he does a great job communicating. Um, it's a pleasure to sit and listen to what's going on in this county and how strong we are financially um, as a school system because of him. So I wanna commend Stephen Britt for our finances right now and uh, you'll hear more from him when he comes up.
Thank you, Mr. Wooton. Anything else, Ms. Andrews or?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, update from the legal committee?
No, no.
Ms. Sesums with the policy?
Uh, we will be meeting here in this room on Thursday afternoon at two o'clock uh, to uh, continue our work in aligning our policies with the North Carolina School Boards Association. Um, it will be uh, an open meeting as always and we invite anyone to participate. Uh, we also online have the opportunity for those who cannot make the meeting to provide input um, on up- upcoming policies for review. And we do take those comments and consider them carefully.
Thank you, Ms. Sesums. Mr. Carroll, do you have a bond committee update? I know Mr. Moore just spoke. Alright, at this time, I'll call on Mr. Britt.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Bracy. Uh, was hoping that tonight would have been focused on our new salary schedules and the hard work that the board has put into that. Uh, but unfortunately, I need to address a article that has come out and dispel some bad information. And in fact, it's downright defamatory uh, information that has been, has been shared. Uh, so I will dive right in uh, to what we are talking about. So I'm sure everyone has seen it and I'll hold it up here. The shocking audio, uh, Johnston County Schools Board members and CFO discussed hiding millions of dollars from commissioners. Uh, this refers to a March meeting uh, that was uh, part of our capital and bond planning meetings. I don't recall exactly which meeting it was, cause we had multiple meetings uh, in March, uh, but it was either March fifteenth or March twenty-eighth. But at that meeting, you know, we were discussing capital needs and bond needs. In that meeting, we uh, discussed uh, how we can meet the capital needs of Johnston County Public Schools. And you have seen part of that here with the bond request. So there's a hundred and seventy-seven million dollar bond request coming, but that is not gonna cover all of the capital needs that the school district has. And you'll see, you saw Mr. Moore showing that we are also putting in Esser funds for federal dollars and capital dollars into that, to that fold as well. And so during these discussions during the year, you know, we, we cover all those things. We look at all the different options that the school board has before it. And so in these meetings, we talk about, in addition to the bond money, there are two separate funding sources that the board has the option to spend capital outlay dollars. And so you have Esser funds, which is federal dollars, that's available for the board to spend. And then you have county dollars or your county tax dollars. And that is uh, you know, fund for or capital outlay. So that's your two primary sources. And of course, Esser is going away. You know, it has an expiration date here in two years, two years from next month. And so, and it's also limited in, in to what you can put into uh, Esser funds. And so, but the board has that option. And so during these meetings, it was discussed about what is the best approach? And so lots of brainstorming took place. Uh, you know, we can, we can move funds around. And so this is something that every school district and entire nation does. It works within its confines to figure out how to fund the school district's capital needs. And so you can move projects around, you can move funds around, uh, you can move expenses around as you need. And that's what this transcript is referring to. So the transcript that I'm talking about is on the report, uh, or in the, in the article. And it says, uh, March twenty-twenty-two audio file, hide the money. So at this time, I'm gonna read my comments uh, that were in that audio file. And I apologize, it's not, I'm not the most eloquent speaker and that is evident here with this, uh, with this. But I'm gonna read what I said anyway. And I, and I, but I admit that I fully, I fully admit I said every word that's in this, in this, um, in this document. So reading aloud, so what we could do and how we are working to get you as close to that thirty-five million was to take eight million dollars out of Esser and put it back into local. And that will keep fund balance floating around twenty-three million. And that would give you another eight million. So let me talk about what we, what we're discussing here, to give you a little context of it. Cause you got a forty-three second snippet of many, many, many hours of conversations that we're having, you know, around budgets and around, uh, you know, around capital. So when I say thirty-five million, so this was the goal that the board set for us, that we are trying to come up with a thirty-five million dollar plan to fund the capital needs for the school district. And so thirty-five million is capital. Eight million is what we're, what we are short, that we've got locked up into our, our uh, current expense budget. So we've talked about Esser, we've talked about capital, but our primary operating budget is current expense. Those are the things that, you know, that we use that literally keeps the lights on. It pays salaries, uh, we use it for, for basic, you know, financial needs, air conditioning, et cetera, et cetera. So, but what you can't put into current expense are capital needs. So you can't build buildings with current expense, you can't um, buy buses with current expense, you can't replace vehicles, you can't replace, you know, um, an entire wing of a school, you know, you can't buy mobile units with current expense fund. There's a, there's a limit on what the board has to its, to its option or can do with current expense funds. And so the conversation was, we have left over current expense funds that are available for the board to reallocate to other places, to, to be able to meet this, this need. The two options are Esser and capital outlay. So the board can either free up money that's in Esser, and that's what we're talking about here. We can move expenses back into local, you know, that we have, we have funded with Esser dollars. And the other option that's available to the board is we can do a fund balance transfer to current, or from current expense to capital outlay. And I know this is getting a little bit technical, but you gotta understand the background of what, a little bit about school finance and a little bit about the background to understand what we're talking about here. So in this, this conversation, you know, we're talking about capital and we're talking about how to, how to fund the schools and how to, how to make the repairs that's needed. And so before you on the screen, I'm gonna go to over a few of the documents that we have that make me, or give me the ability to make a bold statement, to say that this article is defamatory and, and it is full of outright lies. And I, that's a bold statement for your CFO to stand here before you and to say, and it's one that I can say with absolute confidence. Because we have multiple, multiple written documents and communications with the county that proves that we have been transparent in everything that, that we have, uh, everything that we have been talking about, including every single word that I've got in this, in this transcript. So yes, I've said every word that's in that transcript and I fully stand behind it. And I don't, I don't regret saying anything that's in there because it's all accurate and I'm gonna prove how we communicated that with the county now. My first piece of evidence, exhibit A. I feel, I feel like I'm on trial. Exhibit A. Yes. Exhibit A is the superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So I say I can prove everything I'm talking to you about tonight, because anyone with an internet connection can go to YouTube and look at the May eleventh special session. You can go on YouTube and Google this very presentation. I will save you some time. I, I would love for you to watch the entire presentation. I feel like it's riveting, I feel like it's fantastic, it's talking about budgets. But it, and it's a, it's over an hour-long presentation. But forty minutes into it, we get to the slide that I will cut to the chase and get to. There are many, many slides, sixteen slides in is what I am referring to. So I'm gonna get to it here at our capital outlay request. So at, in our capital outlay rec- request, you know, we're, again, we're discussing this, uh, you know, with the board. I'm presenting this to the board, you know, for your approval. Uh, and then this gets submitted to the county commissioners. And this was submitted to the county commissioners on May thirteenth of this year. And so our conversation is around uh, capital outlay. So I'm gonna go back to my comments. I'm gonna give you the numbers again. Close to thirty-five million, we'll remember these numbers, close to thirty-five million, eight million and twenty-three million. So what do we have on the board? Or what do we have on your screen right now? Well, the very top, we have a thirty-four-point-one million dollar capital request. That's the close to thirty-five million that I'm talking about. And then we have eighteen-point-nine million of Esser. So we are informing the county commissioners that the board intends or would like to, as part of its negotiation process with the county commissioners, to contribute eighteen-point-nine million dollars of capital. to contribute eighteen point nine million dollars of capital funds into, or, or of ESER funds to be able to spend for the schools for capital outlay. By the way, this is a fantastic deal for the residents of Johnston County, because this does not count, again, you know, this does not apply to your county tax dollars. Your county tax dollars do not go up, because we're spending eighteen million dollars of ESER funds. These are federal dollars that have been allocated. This is money that's going to be invested into this county that the county will be able to reap the rewards for, for decades to come. And so the next item on there, what is that? Oh, that is eight point five million dollars. And where does that, how, why does that sound familiar? Oh, okay, here it is. I said, we can take eight million dollars and invest here. So this is the eight million dollars that I'm talking about in this, in this document. Eight point five million dollars of fund balance transfer to capital outlay. So remember, I said the board had two options. You could use ESER, you can use capital outlay. What was the result? We're doing both. We've got ESER and capital outlay, and we're communicating that fact to the board. And so we're saying now, with that thirty-four million, we've got six million dollars that we're asking the county to fund in addition to that capital outlay request. And there's more. So now, we're going to skip to slide twenty-one. And this is our fund balance projection. So if you remember, there's two parts of this conversation that I had in this, in this audio. The first part was, I'm talking about the thirty-five million, and I'm talking about eight million. Well, I also mentioned the twenty-three million dollar fund balance. So in this document, that again, anybody can go and look at on YouTube, and it was submitted, submitted to the county commissioners, and we had multiple, multiple offline conversations with the county commissioners and with, between the board and the county commissioners. We had a twenty, we, I've listed on here a twenty-three million dollar available fund balance. So again, matches the twenty-three million that's in this transcript. And so then, what am I saying underneath that? So I'm saying there is a, an approximate net impact of vacancy savings. I'm telling the county commissioners that we have, I'm estimating that we're going to have nine point three million dollars left over after we spend all of our expenses this year. It's right there in black and white. I guess actually, this is blue and white, but it's right there on the document. And then there's that eight point five million dollars again that we're saying we're going to transfer from capital outlay to cover the cost crease. The, and then it ends up, again, getting us back close to the twenty-three million dollars, which is exactly what I said that we were trying to get back to. So I'm showing that we have the funds, that we have money left over, and we're showing that this is what we would like to spend it on. And we're submitting that information to the county. There is absolutely nothing being hidden in that, in this document. But wait, there's more. So we also sent a document with our ESER funding, or, or sent with our ESER funding here that shows how much money we have remaining that is unspent within our ESER budgets. And you can see this for yourself, you can go look at it on the document. But again, this is what we have left over. So we are showing what we are planning on having in our current expense budget. We're showing what we have with our ESER budget, because the allegation is that we are using ESER to hide money. There it is, right there on your screen, two different pages, exactly what the year-to-date expenses were and how much was left over as of May ninth, twenty-twenty-two, when we sent this to the, the county commissioners that following week. It is right there listed in black and white. There's no money being hid. It's all right here. And anybody that had ever watched any of our budget presentations would know that and would see that. But wait, there's more. So my last piece of evidence that I have for you is a fund balance transfer resolution, which we're going to bring up on the screen at this time there. So it is a document that, I'll give you the rest of the background to this, which is, this is also available on YouTube. This is dated June twenty-ninth. So this is, we're, we're talking about a multiple month period here. We've started in March, and now we're, we're in that June twenty-ninth. And so during that time, there are lots of offline negotiations between the board and between the county commissioners, and at this point, we have now received our funding allotment from the county. With that funding allotment, the county, as part of the negotiations, did not fund any capital outlay for the school year. All of that money went into current expense. And so as part of that, part of that process of everything that we've been talking about since March, when we're talking about the eight million dollars, I'm going to read to you what this fund balance transfer resolution says. The very first part is a little bit of legalese, but it basically says we can transfer money when there's, you know, when, when we need to. But it has to be approved by the county commissioners. Underneath that, it says, "Whereas Johnston County Public Schools has a number of capital projects that have not begun construction because of insufficient capital funding due to the dramatic and unforeseen rise of cost as a result of historically high inflation." No surprise there, inflation costs are up, so it's driving up our, our, our capital cost. So we need extra funds to get there. Underneath that, we say, "Whereas Johnston County Public Schools finds itself with leftover funds in its current expense fund." Again, we are telling the county commissioners in writing that we have leftover funds. And so because of this unusually high and temporary lapse salaries in vacancies in the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year. Underneath that, we say, "Therefore, be it resolved that jointly the Johnston County Board of Education and the Johnston County Board of Commissioners hereby authorize Johnston County Public Schools to transfer the sum of, I think we all can, can say that number by this point, eight million dollars from its twenty-twenty-two current expense fund balance to its capital outlay fund for the aforementioned, aforementioned cost increases." Everything that I said in here has come to fruition. So there's no hidden costs, there's no conversation about hiding money. It's all listed right here. Everything is verifiable. Our auditors are here this week auditing our books, and that will be presented to the board here in, in October. And so there's nothing, you know, I have, my proof is in writing, and it's in the communications back and forth with the county commissioners.
Thank you very much, Mr. Britt. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Britt, we appreciate you. I don't, I don't know anybody with more integrity than you that has ever worked in this school system. And it is disturbing to me that you would be targeted in an article that would even lend itself to think that you were doing anything that was not with complete integrity and, and, and following the rules in which you have promised to follow while helping us in this county. And we, I just appreciate you, you're the best I've ever seen.
Thank you.
Mr. Britt, I'd like to also say I've been here since March of twenty-twenty-one, and I do appreciate your integrity and transparency. And it's so sad that you've had to come up here and justify what you've done, you know, since it's already been in public. I apologize for, for those that would have any way accuse you of doing anything that would be not integral.
Thank you.
Mr. Britt, I wish I was there in person to be able to say this, but you know, I expect as an elected official to, for people to take potshots at and to be called various and thunder things. And that is out of bounds, I think, for anyone to drag personnel in who has been as open and as clear. In all our discussions of monies and how we can transfer between funds, what we can transfer between funds, you have been extremely clear in saying, we can do this, we can do that, we cannot do these things, or we will have to clear it with the state, especially as we dealt with what we can fund with ESER funds. In all our conversations, we have been trying to maximize the amount of money, the funds that we have been given, one, from ESER, two, from the county, to address the issues that we have in this county, the years of delayed maintenance that we have not been able to get covered through bond issues. And with what we're doing now, we are going to make up a lot of ground that was not possible in the county without ESER. And you have, from day one, been very clear and very open about what we can and can't do. Maybe my choice of words in terms of moving monies from one fund to another was not the best in the world, but we've never tried to hide money from anyone. We get audits every year. But again, I'll say, I will apologize to you also for you being dragged into this political mess that is a continuation of what's happened in the past, and also the insinuation that was made about Dr. Bracy and trying to drag him into this. It's out of bounds, it is, has no place in our dealings today. But I appreciate what you do, I appreciate the valuable information that you give us financially, and you know, the proof is in the pudding. We wouldn't be in this spot with these funds to allocate to our needs today if you're not in this county. And so I thank you for what you're doing.
Yes, sir, thank you.
One moment. I just want to tag in on what has already been said, and my deepest apologies to you, Mr. Britt. You are not just a fine individual with probably the most high level of integrity of anyone I've ever met, but you are also masterful in a positive way. And if anyone can make, if anyone can assure that children are going to get what, get what funds are intended for, it's you. And my heart hurts that you have been dragged into this. And Dr. Bracy, I want to say the same for you. And I also want to thank you for having brought Mr. Britt to us from Sampson County. Our finances have never looked so good, and I want to thank both of you for the hard work and the dedication that you bring to this school system every day.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Britt, I've already been by your office to talk to you today, but, and, and to apologize for the comments that were made, but, but at the same time, I'm like Kay, we as board members say, we'd like to do this, we'd like to do that. But they all go through you, and you say, we can't do that, we can do this. So thanks for being our buffer and telling us what we can do and what we can't do. We're blessed to have you as a county, and just know that you're, you're, we, we want you to be here for a long, long time. So thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
If I could make a comment? As an elected official, I understand that, as Mr. Carroll just mentioned, I understand that I'm subject to criticism from the stakeholders and the citizens of this county, and I gladly accept that responsibility. I do not, do not, though, however, accept and will not accept the comments of those who make accusations and false statements in regard to my work on this Board of Education. I am very disturbed, as Mr. Britt and Mr. Carroll are as well, by an article that was released yesterday on a local social media outlet. The story resulted from an audio recording that Ronald Johnson, a fellow board member, made during a meeting of the bond committee in March of twenty-twenty-two, as you have heard. Mr. Johnson shared this recording with two candidates who are running for the Board of Education, Michelle Anton and Kevin Donovan. The meeting in March was held to address, as Mr. Britt has said, our proposal for the bond referendum to be presented to the commissioners. Our discussion dealt with how we would utilize the bond money and additional local dollars along with ESER funds to help maintain and repair our facilities. The recording gives a small portion of the discussion of the meeting and is completely out of context to the total discussion. It is clear to me that the people involved with this article are implying that our board is or intends to hide money from the public and our county commissioners. As Mr. Britt has just shown, we had additional money from local funding. We wanted to use that money in the proper way. We understood, because we had an excess of funding and local funding because of vacancies, we understood that the county commissioners would possibly ask for the money back. We wanted to take the money and utilize it and enhance our schools. Our discussion, as Mr. Britt has involved, has, has explained, involved moving money from one count or line item to another, which was my comment in that, that clip. Following this meeting, we were in contact with the county commissioners to ask their permission to transfer the eight million dollars to capital. They agreed. And in the meeting, as he has stated, on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, it is public record that we made that transfer of these funds. And he's shown you the document which was signed. It is clear to me that those responsible for this article are taking my comments in the meeting, which are out of context, along with their quotes in the article, to indicate that I am hiding money from the public. I consider these statements as malicious defamation, both libel and slander. I will, I was never contacted by the editor of this social media outlet or those who assisted with this article in order to seek clarification of my comments. It is my full intention to hold these individuals accountable for their actions in regards to this article. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Mr. Britt, I remember the day that I got the phone call from Dr. Bracy. I was out in my driveway pacing, because we had lost a financial officer to another county. And when Dr. Bracy came to Johnston County, I said, "Dr. Bracy, do you know any good financial officers?" He said, "Let me get approved by the board, and then I'll make some calls." When he called me and told me that he had an individual that could take care of us and turn our financial rim around and get us pointed in the right direction, he said, "Mr. Sutton, I can assure you that by January one of this year, next year, he will have our funds going in the right direction, and he'll be well worth every penny that Johnston County Public Schools pays him." Mr. Britt, Dr. Bracy was one hundred percent correct. From day one, you gained support of everyone immediately, not just in Johnston County Public Schools, county commissioners as well, by saving Johnston County Public Schools and the taxpayers of Johnston County over one million dollars. You restructured salaries from local to state, additional savings for Johnston County Public Schools and the taxpayers of Johnston County. You analyzed our workers' comp program and implemented a back-to-work program for our injured employees. Another savings for Johnston County Public Schools, and oh, by the way, the taxpayers of Johnston County. Yes, I'm a little upset. You do not deserve what this local media outlet did to you. Dr. Bracy, I apologize to you too. We are drawing the line in the sand right now. We're not going to allow this to happen anymore to our Johnston County Public Schools employees. You did not sign up for that, we did. We can take it to a certain degree, but I stand behind you one hundred and ten percent. And by the way, thank you for your service, for what you've done for the United States of America.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Britt.
At this time, we will take a short, brief break to get set up for public comment.
At this time, we will move forward with our public comments. Tonight, we have three speakers signed up for public comment. Citizens who have signed up to address the board during public comment will be called upon as they signed up, and will have three minutes to address the board. The board suggests that specific personnel or student matters be addressed to the school principal, the Johnston County Public School System official responsible for the program or facility, or to the superintendent and are not appropriate for this setting. Tonight, our first guest speaker is Ms. Giselle Karanza. And due to the need, she has requested a speaker by Mr. David Marshburn will be speaking for her. Welcome to the board.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to give y'all a copy of the letter I'm going to read from Ms. Giselle, if that's okay. Do what?
Can we start? Yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna read this letter here. Dear Johnston County School Board Members, hello, my name is Giselle Karanza. I am 16 years old, and I will be in the 10th grade this year at Cleveland High School. From kindergarten up through elementary school, I remember how my teachers stressed the importance of chasing our dreams and aspirations. Ever since I can remember, I have dreamed of becoming a nurse or even a doctor. I felt that the passion is to help others in a crisis. Then something changed. Over the next several years, my dreams and aspirations became nothing more than a memory as my instinct had to kick into survival mode. I continued to advance from 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. The summer before I started 8th grade, excuse me, I was told that our schools would be changing for the better. I was shown an article that had a picture of Dr. Bracy being selected as our new superintendent. It was at this point in time, my dreams and aspirations took over my survival mode and gave me a real sense of possibility to achieving success. A minority like myself that can relate to struggles that can be brought on by the mere color of our skin. For example, that the color of our skin makes us ignorant, unteachable, or can brand us with a learning disability. Here is a man who has defeated the odds and overcome adversity. During that summer, I had been the happiest I had been in a long time. For the first time in several years, I was looking forward to entering a new school year. 8th and 9th grade has come and gone, along with my dreams and aspirations once again. I continue to have to rely on my survival mode. Now today, I stand before you, Mr. Bracy, school board members, staff, getting ready for my 10th grade year. At the beginning of my public comment, I gave each and every one of you a copy of this letter that Mr. Marshburn is reading to you so that you may follow along. You may notice that each letter has a lot of letters and symbols. You may be confused or perplexed as to why. This letter was put together by my thoughts but written and read by Mr. Marshburn due to the fact that I am unable to read and write. So I have only three years left before I am sent out into the world where I must seek employment that requires me to not read or write. I need help. Thank you. And I will give you a real copy of the letter, so y'all will have it. Now, this was coming from her. I did add a few words, but she understands those words. But she wants y'all to understand she wants some help.
Mr. Marshburn, Ms. Karanza, we normally don't reply to public comment, but I feel it's necessary. It is our charge of this board to make sure you get some help. You deserve to do whatever you want to do in life. And Johnston County Public Schools is not going to let you down. That's my promise to you.
You want to say thank you? Because they're going to help you. Recently, I had a young teacher who was with Johnston County but has left. And she came in to assist her and test her to see how well she could do. Well, she didn't do well at all, and that's why we're here. The program is totally different than HMH. It is a program that everyone is using now that is helping young students. But now, we've got an adult almost, and it's harder to teach an adult. But it's science of reading, true science of reading. This girl, this young lady, can have this student, believe it or not, reading proficiently in 12 weeks. And we need to implement this program in Johnston County if we can, because other counties are doing it, and it is working. So I'll get with you guys later on that program and see if we can make it work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I gotta read.
Next is, David Marshburn is our next speaker.
Hey! All right. So this is regarding a school board member. So I'm gonna read something right. If you go beyond the criminal definition of corruption, you will find that it doesn't necessarily have to meet a general statute. There can be corrupt activities that aren't defined by law. However, if you're looking to skirt the law in order for personal gain or in order to do something unethical, then it doesn't matter if you're breaking the law or not. You're corrupt. That is a statement that I play over and over again on our podcast of Mr. Ronald Johnson. It is because, the reason why I'm here today is, over and over since 2016, we have had nothing but turmoil on this board, and it's not your, y'all's fault. Basically, accusations have been called out against other board members and staff. To this day, Johnston County taxpayers have had to foot the bill on fruitless investigations. So you guys have went through and vetted every single thing Mr. Johnson has complained about, argued about, and feloniously made accusations of. When in fact, he himself has had some not-so-good actions himself, immoral and unethical actions of himself. And as a taxpayer, and as many taxpayers that support me in what I'm getting ready to ask, we hope that everyone hears us. I know you guys do not have the authority to say, "Ronald, you're gone. Ronald, you're off the seat. You're causing too many problems." So what I am going to ask you to do is, after he speaks and maybe today discusses it, but there is where y'all have the power to censor Mr. Ronald Johnson and keep him from continuously interrupting our school system, making us an embarrassment of Johnston County and of the state of North Carolina. This is a prime example of what he has done and continuously do to disrupt our school system, and I am not going to tolerate it anymore. It's not... Please use the power of censor and take back control of Johnston County and let our schools be better once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshburn. Our last speaker of tonight, Mr. Joe Preston.
That sounded so official. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, how are you doing? Other board members? You know, I was at a meeting, a commissioners' meeting, just a week or so ago, where I was asking the person to my right to step down. Now I'm asking for the person to my left to step down. I'm not going to ask you to censor. I'm going to ask you to remove. I think you guys have the ability to do that based off of your own policy guidelines. As, you know, everybody knows that Dave and I do a Facebook Live together, the Dave and Joe Show, and we pointed out your own policy where it specifically talks about board member commitments, that they're not to make secret recordings in any format on school system property, at school, or board-related events or meetings, and blah, blah, blah. You know, in that article that was put out, Michelle Antoine, who's running for Board of Education, kept saying it was an informal meeting. It was an informal meeting. It doesn't matter. You're not allowed to do secret recordings based off of your own policy. There are other general statutes that we've also put out there that I believe gives you guys the right to remove somebody. I'm not an attorney. I said this at the commissioners' meeting. I didn't go to law school. I didn't take the bar exam, but I can read. And these general statutes, I think, clearly state what you can do. So I really hope that you remove, I'm gonna say that again to the camera, remove this person that is obviously causing so much stress and not focusing on the kids at all. I mean, we read text messages where he's talking about people, I'm sorry, women coming up for public comments, women addressing the board with what they were wearing, how good they looked, things like that. That's not focusing on the children. That's not focusing on school policy. That's not focusing on what this is supposed to be about. You're on the Board of Education to make sure kids are educated, right? I mean, that's the whole point of you being here. And when you got somebody in a board meeting, sitting there saying something like that and texting people, it's just absolutely ridiculous. So I'm asking for removal. One last thing. In terms of the bond issue, I would really like to see a lot of you at these land use meetings, things like that, because you can create bonds. You can ask for money, but if you continue to let the development happen, the kids are never going to stop coming in, okay? Which just means we're going to need more and more money. So we're just talking about more bonds and more bonds and more bonds and more bonds, and the taxpayers don't like that. So I just want to leave it at that. I got six seconds. God bless everybody. Hey, everybody at home. Talk to you later. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Preston. That concludes our public comment for tonight. We'll take a brief break again to get prepared for our second part of our meeting. We'll go ahead and start back our meeting. Before we get to our advisory appointments, just have a few additional comments and questions. Dr. Bracy, did anyone reach out to you at any point in time regarding concern of hiding any money?
No, sir.
Mr. Britt, did Mr. Johnson reach out to you at any point in time for clarification regarding the information you discussed at that meeting? Mr. Wooton, how involved was Mr. Johnson on the Finance Committee during the budget session?
Very little with me. He might have talked with some other Finance Committee members, but the meetings we had scheduled were evidently at a time that had a conflict with his work. But here's the point, the, Mr. Britt, the decks that he makes for the Finance Committee are very thorough, so for the committee members that weren't arrived, weren't there, he would send, he would forward them a deck of whatever the Finance Committee went over.
I guess if he was so concerned, why did it take roughly six months for him to come forward? And why not discuss this with our CFO or our Finance Chair prior to going to the media? I've already talked about my support to Mr. Britt, and I meant every single word of that support. Based on this information being presented again, and the county being aware of all of these transfers, as well as all of this being conducted in an open session or a Finance Committee meeting, I am requesting that the JOCO report retract that article that was sent out on Monday. Numerous baseless claims of our financial situation have been brought against us without any proof. I would like to make a note again, Mr. Johnson serves on the Finance Committee. He has cost the taxpayers of Johnston County thousands and thousands of dollars for us to confirm what we already knew. We have a clean bill of financial help, health. In addition, Ronald Johnson was present at the following meetings where budget amendments were discussed and approved by a unanimous vote. January 11th, February 8th, March 8th, April 5th, May 10th, and June 14th. You know, we've heard about recordings, and at this point in time, I want to turn it over to our Vice Chair, who is also the Policy Committee Chair, to discuss any and all policies that may have been violated based upon these recordings.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. The most significant policy is Policy 2120, the Code of Ethics for School Board Members. And I would just like to say that this Code of Ethics is required by General Statute 160A-86 and General Statute 115C-4757. So this is a legal requirement through our General Assembly that we have a Code of Ethics. But the most important reason for a Code of Ethics for School Board Members is because students and employees lose when ethics are not in place. The community loses when ethics are not in play. Students and employees and our community is damaged when ethics are not followed. When ethics are not followed, we run the risk of destroying public trust. And our relationship with our commissioners, one of our major funding sources, is damaged when that public trust is violated. And as Mr. Sutton and one of our speakers, public comment, David Marshburn, brought up, these, the many allegations that have been brought forward over the past several years have all been found to be unfounded. And the amount of money that this school system has spent on wellness audits, on investigations and legal fees, that has been a waste of taxpayer dollars. And let me just drill down a little bit about that, because I am a retired educator. Those tax dollars are to be spent on children. So our children suffer when we spend money unwisely. And so that is why it is of such great concern that we adhere to our policy of Code of Ethics. When we destroy the trust of the community, when we destroy the trust between our working relationship with the county commissioners, our children lose. There are many caveats or standards around this policy about board member ethical requirements, and the one that is the most glaring is the need to avoid impropriety in the exercise of the boards and board members' official duties. Specific board member commitments. Number five, respecting the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law and refrain from unauthorized disclosure of matters discussed in closed session. The reason I point this one out is that as the Board of Education, we have received notice that there are allegations that closed sessions were recorded and then played by Mr. Johnson. This is, this current matter is now being investigated by Tharnton Smith, our attorneys. Number seven, not make secret recordings in any format on school system property, at school, or board-related events or meetings, or otherwise connected to the business of the board or the Johnston County Public Schools. According to an email that we received today from Mr. Johnson, he says there are other recordings, and that he will release this depending on how we handle his situation in tonight's meeting. Another area that has been violated. Number 13, refrain from investigating or attempting to resolve complaints received personally, but instead direct the complainant to follow the board's complaint or grievance process to resolve concerns. Mr. Sutton has already mentioned the fact that rather than reporting to the appropriate authorities any concerns that he had about this $8 million, he sat on these recordings for over five months of supposed wrongdoing. And then, instead of turning it over to the authorities who could actually investigate and do something about this, he turned it over to Board, to Board of Education candidates instead. And in the past, one of his reasons that he has given for not turning over recordings or evidence has been that he didn't trust the people in Johnston County, the authorities in Johnston County. So my question is, if that is still the case, why not turn it over to Beth Wood, our state auditor? Number 16, take no private action that will compromise the board or administration. Our integrity has been, has been questioned, as well as the integrity of Mr. Britt and Dr. Bracy. Taking that private action by turning over those recordings, out of which were, the snippets were out of context, it has created a violation of public trust. Number 17, remember always that a board member's first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools. At no time in the back and forth that we have had, has he mentioned the children of Johnston County. As a school board member, I, along with the other six people sitting around this table, we take seriously the responsibility of raising our children in a safe and educational environment. Our community depends on us to do that. The future of our community, the future of our economic community, as well as the safe, safe communities that we all desire to have, all of that is put into jeopardy when our Code of Ethics is not followed.
Thank you, Ms. Sessoms. Additionally, people are continuing to come forward in regards to Ronald sharing audio recordings of closed session items. We are continuing to investigate these items, and as we gain more information, we will share our findings. And the only way we can share our findings is in an open session environment. In closing, I hope that the detailed financial information that was presented tonight by Mr. Britt was beneficial to all, and gave you a better understanding that this was in no way done behind closed doors, no way hiding of money, and was effectively communicated to our county commissioners, and presented in open session formats on the dates that we've provided tonight. Thank you, Mr. Britt. Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Thank you, Board, for standing up for what is right. Thank you. At this time, we will go to our Advisory Council appointment, appointments, starting with Ms. Lynn Andrews.
Advisory members for renewal, Donald Thomas, Catherine Daltrey, and Catherine Vogel, and a new member, Felicia Rawls, for Cleveland High Advisory Council for a three-year term from 2022 to 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. We'll let that stand as our motion. And I have two tonight. The first one, from North Johnston Middle, with the board's approval. Ms. Heather Anders recommends two new members, Mr. Brian Strickland and Kelly Price Sperry to serve in North Johnston Middle School Advisory Council for the, a three-year term, 2022 to 2025. I'll let that stand as our second. And Principal Chad Jewett wishes to recommend one new member, Rebecca McCall, to serve Thanksgiving Elementary Advisor, Advisory Council for 2022 to 2025. That is all of our Advisory Council appointments tonight, so we have a motion in a second already. I'll start with a roll call vote with Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
Ms. Sessoms.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Wooton.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries 6-0. We've already had our public comment for tonight, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I ask that the board approve consent items, numbers one through 11.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion for, to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sessoms, second by Mr. Byrd. We'll go to a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Wooton.
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Ms. Sessoms.
Yes.
Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries 6-0. Let's see here. We've already had our Chief of Facilities and Construction. At this time, I'll call on Mr. Vetrano.
Mr. Chairman, that's okay. I was actually studying the agenda myself, trying to figure out if I was coming up here next. But good evening, everyone. Before I present the personnel recommendations for you to consider, I did want to give you a brief hiring update, because as you know, August 17th, our 10-month employees will be returning back to school to prepare for another wonderful school year. And right now, for our school-based certified positions, we stand at 121 vacancies. To give you a comparison, last year, about this same time, we were at 118. So we're just a little bit higher than where we were last year. I do want to share with you, and I think you know this, that there've been so many individuals who've been working so hard to fill these vacancies. As far as recruiting for our school system, our principals are doing a fabulous job out there trying to fill positions. The HR team and finance team working behind the scenes to get people hired, to get them in payroll so that they can get their first paycheck on time. So I just want to thank everyone for their efforts, because we've, we've had a lot of work to be done this school year, and still a lot to be done. On the classified side, we have 217 vacancies right now. Last year, about this time, we were at 182. So I did want to give you that update. At our next board meeting, I'll share more information. But as we continue to identify ways to recruit and retain staff, I wanted to, to share with you something that cabinet leadership has been working on, and Mr. Britt and I will be getting the specifics together in a few days and sharing this, more information with all of our employees. But another way to help fill these remaining vacancies, we are launching an employee referral bonus initiative. And so to address the remaining vacancies, we are offering $1,000 per, to our employees for each referral that they make that results in us hiring a person for a permanent, in a permanent position, and they need to work at least five months or longer with our school system. And so, you know, there are some of us that this will not apply to, because part of our job is to be ambassadors for the school system. So HR staff members will not qualify for this $1,000. Our principals, their job is to recruit and hire, so they will not qualify for this. Cabinet members, but we-
Brian, I don't, I don't qualify.
No, sir. I think it's part of your job description to speak positively and advocate for our school system. But I appreciate you asking, sir. But we have known that it takes all of us working together. We've talked about being positive this evening. And it's very important that we share the good things, the great things that are going on in our school system. And so we want to reward our employees who go out there and speak positively on our behalf, and invite and encourage others to come and join this amazing team. And other companies have done this and seen success. And again, this is just another item that we're adding specifically this year. We'll talk whether or not we continue to do this next year, but this year, to try to feel- but this year, to try to fill these remaining vacancies. So I just want to thank all of our employees in advance for what they do, because little conversations that you have on the ball field are important. When you speak positively about our school system, people are listening. And people want to come and work for successful organizations like ours. So we're going to continue to work on these remaining vacancies, but did just want to give you a hiring update this evening. So with that, I'm going to move into, oh, I'm sorry, any questions on that that I just shared?
No, but I want to thank you for looking ahead in this way. First of all, I firmly believe in my heart that we have the absolute best employees that you could possibly find anywhere. And having them out there as agents, bringing other quality people in, they should be rewarded for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vetrano, just a quick question, and I may have missed it. Is there a limit to the number of people that an employee can refer?
No, so Mr. Britt and I are going to get the specifics together, because we have talked about, you know, could this be split sixteen different ways? So if we hire someone and they say sixteen people spoke with me, we're going to ask, who influenced you the most? So we're going to have to get the specifics together.
I believe Dr. Bracy is going to get his wife on it now, so.
I understand. I understand. But, you know, Ms. Sessoms, to your point, people want to work with quality people. Because when you have a member on your team and they're not pulling their weight, it puts more on you. So all of our employees really want to bring to our team quality individuals, because it goes to our focus, which is benefiting students. But it also benefits the team. And so, it makes sense to have your quality staff out there helping to do the recruiting for the school system. So we're excited about this. We'll be putting more information out there. And we feel like this will make a difference in getting more quality individuals to our school system. The administrative personnel recommendations for you this evening. And I do want to start out by making two announcements on the superintendent's behalf, two administrative transfers. The first is Ms. Sharon Bryant, principal at Riverwood Middle, is transferring to curriculum, instruction, and accountability as an administrator. The second transfer announcement, Ms. Sarah Reynolds, principal at Cleveland Middle, will be transferring to principal Corinth Holders High School. I wanted to share that first, so that the recommendations that are coming to you, you would understand. The first recommendation is a principal recommendation, two-year contract, Monica Sawyer, and this is for Riverwood Middle School. I just announced the transfer for Ms. Reynolds to Corinth. We will be posting a principal vacancy position for Cleveland Middle. But during the interim, the recommendation from the superintendent is that Ms. Lynn Prescott serve as interim principal at Cleveland Middle School. She's currently an assistant principal there. And then, we have three assistant principals, two-year contracts for each of these. Heather Best for Thanksgiving Elementary School, Mada Malia Blake, Cleveland High School, and Choya Boykin, Choice Plus Academy. So those are the recommendations before you.
This is an action item, so I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wooten.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sessoms. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll go to a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Wooten.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Ms. Sessoms.
Yes.
Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that we skipped salary schedules for Mr. Britt.
We'll come back to Mr. Britt on that. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vetrano. Thank you, Mr. Wooten. Yes, I still have it on our agenda there for him to discuss. So at this time, no further ado, Mr. Britt.
Good evening again, board members, Dr. Bracy. Presented for your consideration tonight is our 2022-23 budget resolution. So you know, I love analogies, because I think it makes complex topics a little bit easier to understand. And so, this is probably oversimplifying to a great deal. But I like to think of our budget as a scale. So on one side of that scale, you've got revenues, and the other side, you have expenses. And so, in the long term, the goal is to balance that scale for public entities or school districts. We, our goal is to have a balanced scale. In any given one year, we are not going to have a balanced scale, because there's always going to be activity that tip that scale one way or the other each year. And this upcoming year, and this is the year that we're in now, will probably be one of the most volatile years that we have financially, because there is a lot of tipping that is going to go back and forth. So I'm going to call this scale more like a seesaw this year, because there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot that's going to be impacting it, that's going to move it in each direction. So one of the things that's going to tip it to where we would have savings again, would probably be vacancy savings. And so, you'll have that that's going to reduce expenses. On the flip side, subs and stipends will continue, and it will increase expenses. And then, we compound that with the fifteen-dollar-per-hour minimum, again, for this upcoming year. And we know that DPI in the county increased revenue. So I feel like I've got good cop, bad cop, or positive and negative throughout this whole slide. And that's true. That's what's happening. It's a seesaw, back and forth, positive and negative, financial. When I say positive, negative, I mean financial positive negatives, not necessarily positive or negative for the school system. But DPI in the county increased revenue. On the flip side, we will probably have a multimillion-dollar reversion of state funds coming in December. So what does that mean? That means that DPI, as I've said many, many times, DPI giveth and it taketh away. So DPI has allocated us to have just over thirty-eight thousand and some odd students this year. I, you know, working with Dr. Bracy and the rest of cabinet, you know, we feel that is an overestimate of what our growth will be for this upcoming year because of the growth, because of the new charter school. And so, I don't, we don't believe that DPI allocated or took that into the allocation. So we believe that we're probably going to be over-allocated funds now, only to have those funds taken back in December. And so, we've known this for several months now, and so that is built into this budget. So we're basically pretending like we don't actually have that extra money from DPI, because we know it's probably going to be a fairly significant reversion, probably somewhere north of three-point-five million. It could even be as- Yes, ma'am. Yes. Yes. And so, as long as our, you know, I picked with my colleagues here, as long as our enrollment number starts with a three-seven, we will be just fine. You know, so that, because Dr. Bracy is always very cautious with positions. Positions are the number-one thing that gets school districts into financial trouble. And so, that, you know, that's been approached in a very cautious matter. And so, we also have salary increases coming up, which will be in our next topic for approval. We have matching benefit cost increase, utility cost increase, charter school cost increases, which has gone up several million dollars this year, and other inflationary cost. So if you look at the budget in total, this budget does include, for the first time since I've been here, a allocation of fund balance. So we're getting back, even though we've got this volatility, we're getting back to more of a normal cycle. You will see in the future that in a normal year, you will see me request the board to budget fund balance, even though we may not necessarily spend it. So my budgeting method is I budget for a hundred percent employment. So I, and every department spending their entire budget out that year. And so, if every department spent their budget and every person, every position was filled for the entire year, we would spend about two-point-six million dollars. The reality is, we, not every department will spend all their budget, not every school will spend all their budget, and not every position will be filled. And so, the reality is, we will likely not spend fund balance this year. But always budget for, you know, the full employment, because at some point, we will have full employment again. So in normal years, you will see a budget of fund balance. And what that does is that allows, you know, that allows us to be more flexible with our budgets and our, more importantly, our position allocations to the school. It gives Dr. Bracy a little bit more flexibility in what he provides to the schools. So all that is a normal, normal year. So in this slide, you'll see some of our comparisons for our current expense fund. It looks at what the 2022 budget was for last year, what the budget is for this year, and what the difference is between the two. And so, normally, I would include a state budget, and I would include a federal budget. Well, we don't have all our federal budgets yet. And state is going, as I mentioned earlier, is going to pretty dramatically change. And so, you would be, really be looking at kind of information that's going to be immediately outdated here whenever we get our reversion. So looking at current expense, I always say that our funds trickle down to local. So whenever there are vacancies in state, what we do is we move expenses from local to state to fill that gap, and that frees up local funds. And that's what you see here. You also see the inverse of that. When there's not enough state funds to pay for salary increases or benefit cost increases, which is very often the case, you will see us have to pull up or actually move expenses from state to local, and that eats up local dollars. And that's what you see here. So some of your major increases that you see are our benefit cost, which is our PRC eight oh nine, and that went up four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. Our technology, then that's just for inflation, it goes up, or it's budgeted to go up two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Our local supplements, and this is one of the main items that bears the brunt of the, you know, the inadequacy of the state to fully fund its, the costs there. That has gone up by three million dollars, or projected to go up by three million. And that's to cover the state shortage and supplement increases. Anytime that there is a teacher pay increase, the local supplement automatically increases as well, because it's a percentage, it's a percentage base. Charter school payments, we have budgeted an additional two-point-eight million dollars for that line item as well. And that's for the addition of the American Leadership Academy. We do not know exactly what that cost will be at this time, because we don't know how many students will end up enrolling in the American Leadership Academy, but I will keep the board updated.
In addition to four-point-six million?
Yes, ma'am. So our charter school cost line item is increasing from four-point-six million to seven-point-five million in one year. And so, a lot of folks don't understand that. They don't realize that charter school funds flow through the local LEA or the Local Education Agency. It goes from the county to the school district, and then we, on a per pupil basis, allocate that money to the, to the, to the, to the schools. And bless my staff, because they are almost doubling their number of charter school students that they're going to have to track. And we check every single address on there. So there's going to be thirty-five hundred students, and they will check them one by one. Yes, ma'am. And it is, it's a, because if we don't want to pay for a student that might have a Clayton address but actually lives in Wake or has a Garner address, you know, but is being billed to us, but they actually are Wake. So another large line item is increase in SRO cost. This is not for a growth of the number of SROs. This is due to the cost increase coming from the sheriff's office and police departments. Truth be told, we were probably, realistically, we were probably getting a really good deal on SROs in the past, and that has since been changed. The, we also have about six-hundred thousand increase in the facilities and utilities budget, and almost all of that, in fact, more than almost all of that, the entire part is for utilities cost increase, because between, what was it, Brooks, between January and June, our fuel oil cost went up eighty-six percent, I think it was. It went up a dramatic amount. And some of our other utilities have gone up as well. And they also have pay increases built into that line item. And so, that's where the brunt of the, of the cost increase will come from. We're projecting eight-point-one million if we were fully employed of cost increase. And the next line item, I am going to phone a friend and bring in my, bring in my resident Esser expert, Ms. Anna Milizata.
What if the friend doesn't answer?
I got you on speed dial.
Oh, can you click?
Yes.
Okay. You're not necessarily I have. Good evening. So Esser update, we are just going to talk very briefly about it, because we all know what the money is for it to be spent. And in Johnston County, our plan is reflective of the needs that emerged, emerged as a result of the COVID pandemic. So basically, our next plan is, what we use Esser three more will be, addressing learning loss through evidence-based interventions that respond to our students' academic, social, and emotional needs. And actually, that is a requirement of the Esser three, that at least twenty percent be spent on those interventions. And in the district, we are going to be investing a lot of our tutors, evening academies, Saturday evenings, coaches, and also we have all the gear funds that are for social workers and will be paid now with the Esser three. It was approved by cabinet. We will also, and as we know, eighteen million dollars, nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars will be reserved for providing a safe and healthy environment by working on school facility repairs to improve air quality for our students, and also reduce the risk of virus transmission. And the last is ensuring that all students have access to high-quality curriculum, learning resources, and technology will be in collaboration with CIA and also the technology department to have the best resources for our students and teachers. Now, if we go to the next slide, this is the Esser one, or what's called CARES Act. And that's the amount of money that we have remaining as June thirtieth. As you all know, the money would expire in September of this year. And we did a good job making sure that what we needed was used for now with those funds. We still have one sixty-seven, which is the EC funds, and they are working on additional instructional supplies. And one sixty-nine is the gear funds. They are paying social workers and nurses and psychologists. And that is part of the fund that we're going to continue supporting with Esser three when this in September goes away. Next one. That is Esser two, and that's one of our first big money, twenty-nine million dollars. And right now, we have seven million dollars on that. All the other funds that are one seventy-three to one seventy-eight are very specific for that initiative. So we cannot, we don't have the flexibility to use with other things, like this cool nutrition or summer learning program. So we collaborate with that department to make sure that we maintain compliance and that we write the grant together. And then, the one eighty-ones, and waiting, the one eighty-nines and two-hundreds, because the numbers keep coming. So one eighty-one is the highest one. That's what we call Esser three, and that will be the one that we'll have until 2024. So right now, we are planning on the budget to have the facilities repairs on one eighty-one, but also maintaining all the interventions, because we have to guarantee that at least fifteen million dollars will be used for school interventions. All the other ones are the extra ones that have to be specific. And actually, this week, we had approved two more, one eighty-nine and one eighty-eight, right? That we worked with CIA, and it's another one-point-seven million dollars. One is for CTE summer program, and the other one is for math enrichment program. I think that's it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for the update. I appreciate you all being very frugal with our money and making sure that it is utilized in the proper manner. And for everyone listening, Esser funds- And for everyone listening, ESSER funds, I, I like to use, um, use one of, uh, terms of Mr. Britt. It's, it's kind of in the cloud. It's, it's designated to Johnston County, but it doesn't mean Johnston County has that money in our checkbook. Um, as well as there's a lot of processes and procedures and red tape that we have to go through for this money to be deposited into Johnston County Public Schools' checkbook. It's just not, we call up and say, hey, Mr. Wooton's a banker. Mr. Wooton moved that money. It's not that easy. DPI wants a lot of information as to why you need that money. We've had comments in the past that we got all this money and we're just running through it. But it's not that easy. Um, when we've tried to do things, we've had to fill out applications and, and go through the proper channels. Um, I want to thank you, Mr. Britt, you as well, and all of your staff for the hard work that they do to keep up with this ESSER money to make sure that it's documented properly as well as used properly. So that we're, when we have an audit, it's a very easy audit for our auditors because we have everything in, in place and we got it at our fingertips. So thank you all very much.
And just one additional comment. When Mr. Moore came forward to discuss the bond, he talked about one seventy-seven and he talked about twenty-six point nine, twenty-six million, nine hundred and fifty thousand. That was an additional money that we're going to add to that one seventy-seven to complete, um, physical repairs and buildings, new schools, those kind of things in our system. He went through that slide presentation. When you look at this, it's not up there now, but when you look at that, uh, one eighty-one line item, that's what Ms. Melzato was saying is that out of that eighteen point nine five oh, eighteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, uh, eight hundred million, nine hundred and fifty thousand of that money attached to the infamous eight million that everybody's worried it's hidden somewhere. We add that money together, that is the additional money that's going with the bond. It's not part of a vote, but that's the additional money that we are making a commitment to use to help repair and enhance our facilities. So there's your, there's your line item where the ESSER money was, is going to be used because we can use that. If I'm correct, we can use ESSER money for enhancing of HVAC systems, things that deal with air quality. And again, as Mr. Sutton said, these are grants. Anytime you've dealt with a grant, a grant is an application. They can say yay or nay, uh, the DPI can. And once they approve that, they give us the money, we move forward with the project. But I did, the eight million is right there along with this money.
That's exactly right. Yes, ma'am.
So this is a action item. So I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wooton, second by Mr. Bird. Go to a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Bird.
Yes.
Ms. Sesums.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Wooton.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll. And I vote yes. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. The last item that I have for tonight is, uh, probably one that, uh, a lot of our employees are waiting to, to hear about at this point. Uh, it, it is our proposed, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three salary schedules. Before I get into it, I do want to say that this is not a perfect schedule. And we, we fully recognize that and we know that there's still work to be done. You know, it, it is a work in progress. This is the second year of a multi-year plan that, to keep, to keep moving in the direction that we need to go in. Uh, it's going to, you know, it, you know, it, we didn't get behind with our salary schedules overnight. And we, unfortunately, we can't, we can't repair them or can't get to where we need to be overnight. But that's part of that communication and, and part of that work with the county commissioners that the Board of Education has done. Uh, and because of that, because of those conversations that the, the two boards have had and, and been able to work together, uh, this has been made possible. So, so thank you for that. And with that, we'll dive into, uh, some of the details. So from the state, so there's two components to it. There is what is, uh, provided by the state. And I won't say funded by the state because, you know, I mentioned before, the state does not automatically fund its pay increases that it authorizes or that it promotes. And the fifteen dollars an hour and the four percent pay increase is one of those. A prime example of, of what is not funded by the state, but this is in school nutrition. So the school nutrition department will not receive any money for that fifteen dollar an hour minimum. It will have to come all out of the gen, out of the revenue that the school nutrition department generates to, to, uh, to keep, you know, to keep that department afloat. And so you've got fifteen dollars an hour and a four percent increase. Uh, that include, that's everybody. That's, that's a minimum for every classified employee regardless of position. What has been county funded is the compression, uh, from, you know, we started out with fifty-four steps last year. Uh, we were able to compress eight down to forty-six steps. And now we have another compression from, from forty-six to thirty-eight. So what does that mean? It means that it no longer takes you fifty-four years as a classified employee to reach top pay. So, yeah, if you were to start as a school nutrition employee or you were to start as a TA, you know, if you started at twenty-one, uh, you could get there by the time you were seventy-five years old. And so we've been able to compress that each year, you know, for the last two years. We're, we are now down to thirty-eight, uh, with classified. The goal was to get it to thirty so that there is a, a scale that's throughout the thirty-year career of, of Johnston County Public School employees, which by the way, this is, this, you know, this is basically getting us back to the schedule that we had twenty-five, thirty years ago before they, uh, before they started expanding and growing. And so the, um, one of the big movers this time, and again, you know, this is a work in progress. And so there, there will constantly be groups that's going to move in, in the next phases as we go. One of the big moves is the TA salary schedule. And so we've finally been able to get the TA salary schedule, uh, to match the bus dual role. So this means as a dual role employee, as a TA, TA bus driver, previously you made more as a bus driver than you did as a TA. And so now you will make, um, at minimum, the exact same thing. Your TA time will pay, finally pay as much as your bus time. And so regardless whether you're on a bus or in the classroom, the minimum pay is fifteen sixty. And there is a gradual increase over thirty steps, uh, that maxes out at seventeen seventy-four, uh, per hour for that. So we were able to get it down to thirty steps, uh, with that, with that group as well. Uh, it means that overtime, the minimum rate now will be twenty-three forty. And if you look at what we paid in August of twenty twenty-one, uh, we paid, I think it was twelve ninety-six per hour. And if I did my math right, moving from twelve ninety-six to fifteen sixty, I think we have some math teachers in the audience here that could, uh, could double check my math, but I believe that's roughly a twenty percent, uh, pay increase over a one-year period. And so this is one of the only times I've seen since I've been in education where we're able to actually, uh, beat inflation in there, especially this year with, with inflation as high as it is. Not, uh, non-certified subs will move to a hundred and twenty dollars a day. And so that's calculated as fifteen dollars per hour times eight hours a day. Long-term, uh, subs and TAs, uh, so we've, uh, Dr. Bracy has worked with us again this year to, uh, enable that to be, um, uh, to be pushed out to the schools again. Uh, that will be paid also at fifteen dollars per hour. And so this means that the schools will, you know, and, um, Mr. Patrano will, will work with us with the details of how that will roll out. Uh, but you'll have, the schools will get notification of what their extra allotment would be, you know, for, for both a long-term TA and a long-term sub. Driver only, as the board has already approved, uh, will be paid at seventeen fifty dollars, seventeen dollars and fifty cents per hour. And we have a one hundred, uh, dollar per month, uh, safety and attendance bonus, uh, for school nutrition assistance. Any questions on the classified before I move to certified?
Very much so. So deserving. Yeah. Yeah, a long time needed. Thank you.
This is a five point eight million dollar, uh, cost increase on there. So it is greater than what we received from the county. And so we are combining, you know, what we've talked about several times tonight. We're combining resources to build.
The line item.
That's right. We're, we're making it happen. So that's. Moving on to certified. Certified had, really surprised me this year from the state. Uh, I, the state really did the opposite of what I expected it to do. Um, but the pay range is, or the increase is from two and a half percent to seven point two percent with the step. So including, uh, you know, this is how the state, you know, advertises it back to school districts. It includes a step increase. Uh, and so the two and a half percent, the weaker side is on the, uh, our most, uh, tenured teachers or most highest, uh, highest experienced teachers. Uh, beginning teacher pay, uh, with supplements. So there's multiple supplements that are in there. It includes the six hundred and fifty-four dollar, uh, low-well supplement that will be paid in June plus the, I think it's eleven and a half percent, uh, uh, local supplement, uh, would take beginning teacher pay to forty-one thousand nine oh nine. The fifty dollar, uh, per day planning period stipend, uh, would also continue into next year or into this year as well. This past year, we paid two point six million dollars in this line item by itself. And so when you combine the two point six million that we paid in planning period stipends plus the three, over three million that we spent in, for subs, we spent over five million dollars uh, in cover, in classroom coverage this last year, way more than what we've ever spent in the past. And this is going to be one of our wild cards this year. It will heavily depend on COVID and vacancies.
I'm sorry, tell me the total of that.
Yes. For.
We spent how much this year?
Uh, this past year, we spent, uh, two point six million dollars on, uh, planning period stipends.
Okay. That's, that's elementary and high?
Yes. And that includes, uh, matching benefits as well.
Okay.
And over three million for, uh, for subs.
Okay.
And that will go, those costs will go up, or at least the substitute costs will go up this year as well. Local, and we talked about earlier, local supplement increases in relation to the state increase. Uh, the certified substitute rate, uh, will go up to a hundred and forty dollars per day. And so that's an effort to differentiate between your non-certified and certified. So we're going above and beyond what the state requires for that. Uh, so that, that is a, a twenty dollar per day differential to, to, uh, to boost that. Uh, we do, uh, you know, the, uh, facilities, or excuse me, the auxiliary services department has worked really hard on, uh, working with, uh, coaching, uh, supplement increases. So we do have a, a small increase in that area. Uh, and there is an increase in the athletic trainer supplement range. There is, in, within your packet, there is a, I'm not sure how many pages it's grown up to, but it is a very, uh, very detailed, uh, salary schedule. We will, if this is approved tonight, we will post it on our website, the finance page, uh, tomorrow, uh, so that everyone can see. And we also will email it out to, uh, to the staff.
This is very exciting, um, when you can increase salary schedules for both certified and, and classified who well-deserved increases are, uh, needed and, and continuing to close that, um, tier program that we have and many steps that it took to get to the top level as a classified employee. So I appreciate what you and your staff and the finance committee and everybody else that had a part of this um, did to make this happen. I just would like to point out one thing about, we talked about a little while ago with our SRO officers. And I just think it's the right timing. We can't put a price on what it costs for SRO officers. And, um, I'm excited that we have SRO officers that go to our schools every day, but also interact with our students and understand what it takes on a daily basis. And, um, you know, we have some of the finest SRO officers in the, in the state working in Johnston County. And we look forward to the day that we can have one at every one of our schools. So, thank you. This is an action item, so I entertain a motion to approve.
They're moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrews, second by Ms. Sesums. Uh, any questions or comments?
Um, I just want to thank you, Mr. Britt, Dr. Bracy, um, Ms. Melzato for the careful way that you've handled the money for the school system. And I especially want to thank you for making these pay raises a reality. This has been something near and dear to my heart. And, um, as we look at bus driver pay, this is allowing us to recruit more full-time drivers, which will very soon, I hope, allow us to remove the board policy requiring, um, classified staff to drive, unless they want to, okay? The requirement though would be removed and they would still have the option if they chose to do so because we know that, um, many of our classified staff enjoy the extra income from driving a bus. But thank you for your hard work, gentlemen and lady.
I have one comment. But.
Okay. Um, we'll go to a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Wooton.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Ms. Sesums.
Yes.
Mr. Bird.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Britt, could you come back up front for a second? And before I make my comments, I want to thank Mr. Britt and the board for increasing the salaries that we have just increased. I want to sort of echo what Ms. Sesum said. It's just, it's major, the work that this board has done in a very short time and getting those salaries up to where they are, seventeen fifty, driver onlys, fifteen fifty, TAs, I believe, Mr. Britt.
Fifteen sixty, yes, sir.
Fifteen sixty, thank you so much, that. And Stephen, I've lost count of the number of years that you and I've worked together. What is it now?
I think we're at six, I think it is now.
Six years.
I think six, yes.
And we've been in a lot of board meetings over those six years.
Yes, sir.
It's the first board meeting that you've ever had to defend yourself to a Board of Education and to a community.
This is first time in my, um, in both my civilian and military service I've ever been questioned. And, uh, definitely not, didn't, didn't see that coming. That was a, uh, definitely a blind side.
I never thought I'd see that day. When this news came, I, I couldn't tell you how many calls I've gotten from Sampson County. People that wanted to come here tonight and speak on your behalf. Thank you for what you do. Anybody that knows Stephen and works closely with him, and we as a leadership team and the finance department has the joy of working with him every day. His integrity is impeccable. And when he gives you a number, you can take that number to the bank. And I want to go back and Mr. Sutton started telling this story, but I, I want to finish this story about when I agreed to come and we needed a finance officer. Number one, I wasn't going, tell them about Stephen till I knew I was coming here. That was part of the deal, approve me and I may know a friend. So when I agreed to come and I was approved in this room, and then think a week later, maybe a week later, Mr. Stanley decided to move on. And Mr. Sutton called me and we had that conversation. He said the finance, he was real upset, the finance officer has resigned. Do you know anybody? And I said, oh, I know somebody. Absolutely, I know somebody. And then he asked me a question. Is he good? I said, he's the best I've ever seen. He's the best I've ever seen. And Stephen, I just, I want to thank you for all that you do for us here in this school system.
Well, thank you for letting me ride your coattails over here.
Your transparency is, is amazing. You have the gift of explaining finance so anybody can understand it. Even non-math people can understand what you do. And we have made what I consider, and we'll share those details out later this month after the state approves all the accountability results. The state board has to approve those. We've made what I believe and what Dr. King and the staff and Kristy Stevenson believe are significant results this year. Folks, I'm here to tell you, none of that is possible without Stephen being a key member of our leadership team. And we're just so fortunate and lucky to have you. I'm proud of all the accomplishments that we've made since we got here in twenty twenty, proud of every one of them. One of my largest points of pride is what we've done in finance because you and I sat in my office in Sampson and talked about the challenges, the financial challenges that we were walking into. And I just, I want everybody to know that normally when we all leave here, his vehicle is still in the parking lot late at night, just ride by. His vehicle is still in this parking lot because he is dedicated to this school system. He believes in this school system. And he wants us to be the best school system in this state. And we all know that we will not get there if we don't have an amazing finance department. So Stephen, I just want to say publicly to everybody, thank you for all that you do. We certainly appreciate you. And I want everybody to know, this leadership team is dedicated to making this district the best in the state. When we get in this room on Monday, that's what our charge and our purpose is, to make great decisions that impact this school system. And I just want to thank the leadership team and everybody in this room for all your dedication and helping us get where we want to get to. And Dr. King and Kristy will share the story at our next board. And Dr. King and Kristi will share the story at our next board meeting. We look forward to that day. And Stephen is, Stephen always has a saying, I'm not an educator. Well, I disagree, you are an educator because we can't do the great things without your special talent, and you certainly have a special talent. I just want to publicly thank you for all that you do and your dedication and the many sacrifices of your time and your family's time that you make to this school system each and every day. We appreciate you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy, and, you know, it's, I feel like we've gotten a lot accomplished tonight. We have shared new salary schedules. We have reeducated everyone on everything that we have been on the up and up. And just to add on, Dr. Bracy, I remember a call one day, you said, hey, come on down to Sampson County, we got a place to eat. And boy, did they have the best hot dogs. And Stephen and I and Dr. Bracy sat around the table and strategized about finances in Johnston County. And from day one, he hit the ground running. And, Dr. Bracy, you have too, and made great strides in our academic achievement, and I cannot wait to hear the story, Dr. King, of where we currently are and where we're going. But as you said in a board retreat, it's going to be hard, but it can be done. And I think that started at that point in time, and it's starting, it's continuing to be contagious throughout our county. We're only as good as the person beside us. We all need to lock arms and take care of Johnston County Public Schools the best we can for the students, staff, and everyone that darkens the door on a daily basis to each and every one of our schools. So I thank this board for what you have accomplished and continue to do on a daily basis for Johnston County Public Schools.
And I just want to say, Mr. Chair, that part of our confusion with the agenda this evening was we were so stunned that Dr. King wasn't on the agenda for his typical one-hour presentation.
Absolutely.
But he's saving that sermon for next month when he can share all of the great accountability results.
You know, and most of all, the thing we must not do as a board and as a community, as a school system, as individual schools, as the parents, we can't get distracted by all the things that are thrown at us and lose the focus of the 37, I hope, thousand students that are going to walk in the door on August 29th. That's what we're here for. We're not here for the social media, we're not here for Facebook, we're not here for the comments of those who continuously want to put our school system down. We're here to not let that mar our focus, that we will, we will not stop until we are the best school system in the state. We've been there before, we're going back. Also, tomorrow and Wednesday, we welcome into our district our new teachers, our Beginning Teacher Institute, I don't know if that's what you call it now, is that what you call it, Mr.? And so we have some excited young teachers that will be entering, I think at Swift Creek Middle School, and they will be in training on Wednesday and Thursday. Y'all, remember the day. Remember your first day? Those of you who are educators in this room, that's their first day. So if you get a chance to ride out there, I think it starts maybe tomorrow morning, get a chance to ride out there and speak to these people, speak to them, but man, their hearts are pounding, they may not sleep good tonight, but we welcome them into Johnston County Public Schools because all this other stuff, it don't matter. What matters is when those people get in front of children and change their lives forever. And now, we're not going to let all this other mess get in our way. We'll handle the stuff we need to handle, but we want our school system and our teachers and staff, parents and children to have the best experience possible. So, you know, we're not going to go, we're going to stay right here and get.
We want, if I could just say this, Ms. Andrews, what we as a district want to do is give everybody a reason to choose us as they make their decisions on where they send their children. We want everybody to choose us.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Thank you, Ms. Andrews. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wooton, second by Ms. Sesums. Roll call, starting with Mr. Bird.
Yes.
Ms. Sesums.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Wooton.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries six zero. We're now adjourned.